Good afternoon. We are going to call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners Meeting of October 7th, 2025. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. We are going to proceed to public hearings, starting with our ordinances. Item P-46, please.
I have publication for P-46, Tampa Bay Times, July 9th, 2025, July 16th, 2025, July 23rd, 2025, and July 30th, 2025. This item was continued from the August 5th, 2025, BCC meeting to the September 3rd, 2025, BCC meeting, where it was continued until today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Victorios Petos, Planning Development Economic Growth Department. Item P-46 is PDE 260008. This is an ordinance amending Pasco County Ordinance Number 2140, contracting and expanding the boundaries of the Two Rivers North Community Development District. And the request is to continue the item to the November 12th, 2025, Board of County Commissioners Meeting at 1:30 PM in Date City.
Would you continue, Tom Sargent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
P-47.
I have publication for P-47, Tampa Bay Times, July 9th, 2025, July 16th, 2025, July 23rd, 2025, and July 30th, 2025. The item was continued from the August 5th, 2025, BCC meeting to the September 3rd, 2025, meeting, where it is continued until today.
Item P-47 is PDE 260009. This is an ordinance amending Pasco County Ordinance Number 2141, contracting and expanding the boundaries of the Two Rivers West Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. This comes here with a recommendation from the Planning Development Economic Growth Department to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Okay, does anyone wish for any more information? Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I'll take a motion.
On line.
Nope, there's gonna be on line today.
Second.
Roll call.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Chairman Starkey.
Aye.
P-48.
Proof of publication, P-48, Tampa Bay Times, August 20th, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P-48 is PDE 260017. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 14, from AG Agricultural to EC Employment Center on approximately 47.58 acres of real property located on the west side of McKendry Road, approximately 3,560 feet south of the intersection of Tyndall Road and McKendry Road, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repeal or severability and an effective date. This comes here with a recommendation from the Planning Development Economic Growth Department, as well as the local planning agency, to adopt the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment and ordinance by roll call vote. There is a presentation if so desired.
Board members, would you like the presentation?
No, thank you.
I like what I see.
Okay. Then, is there anyone here in the public to speak to this item?
Move approval.
Who's he signed up for?
P-50.
Okay.
Second.
I think it's another roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye.
Okay, we are on to our public hearings.
Madam Chair, would you like me to read the procedure?
I would.
There are two resounding agendas, regular. There are two resounding agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for group representative. And the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request that the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's land development code for rezoning. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear the public in, please?
Yes, please. If anybody would like to speak, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth? So help you God.
Okay.
P-49, I have the proof of publication, Tampa Bay Times, August 20th, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P-49 is PDE 267870. This is a zoning amendment to the name of Kiriakos G. and Nadukudi J.G. and Kipanisarel B.N.L. Flint Retail and Office. It's a change in zoning from a C2 general commercial district, C1 neighborhood commercial district, and R3 medium density residential district to a C2 general commercial district and PO2 professional office district in East Pasco County on the north side of Pure Water Way, formerly known as State Road 54, containing approximately 5.78 acres. This comes here with a recommendation from the planning commission and the Planning Development Economic Growth Department to approve the zoning amendment.
Okay. Do we want to see a presentation on this one?
It's consent.
No.
Okay, keep it on consent. Is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak in opposition of P-49? All right, we'll keep it on consent.
Seeing no one, move approval.
No, it's consent agenda, so you've got several consent today.
But I do have someone who signed up to speak to the next one, so let's go ahead and take this one.
Well, you've got 50.
I only have P-50.
You've got 83 as well.
Oh, that's right, 83.
It's an on addendum. So if you're gonna pull 50 off, then I'd do 83.
Okay, let's take up the addendum. For me, it's in the back of my book. It's AP-83.
AP-83, proof of publication, Tampa Bay Times, August 20th, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item AP-83 is PDE 267881. This is a zoning amendment, substantial modification to the Double Branch MPUD, formerly known as Pasco Town Center MPUD, by PTC Boyett LLC et al. It's a rezoning request to substantially modify the Double Branch MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to amend the name of the MPUD to the Double Branch MPUD and to amend the MPUD entitlements to increase the industrial entitlements from 4 million square feet to 6 million square feet and to increase the office entitlements from 725,000 square feet to 1,725,000 square feet and associated infrastructure on approximately 966.87 acres located in central Pasco County. This comes here with a recommendation from the planning commission and the Planning Development Economic Growth Department to approve the MPUD rezoning request subject to the attached rezoning conditions of approval.
Okay, board members, this is on consent. Is there anyone who wants to see anything more on this one?
Also, Madam Chair, I'll note that there were ex parte's that were received post-publication. They've been submitted to the clerks.
Okay, and is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to AP-83? Okay.
We don't have this, so we'd like the item approved upon, contention upon the clerk review.
That needs to be part of the motion. So make a motion.
Yeah, make that part of the motion. Yeah. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then we're back to P-50.
Publication for P-50, Tampa Bay Times, August 20th, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Good afternoon. Amy Toll with Planning Development and Economic Growth. Before you is a Euclidian rezoning petition. The request is to change the zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District to R1 MH Single Family Mobile Home District. The existing zoning district is limited to one dwelling unit per acre, where the proposed rezoning would allow them to construct a home on a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, subject sites located at the southwest corner at the intersection of Brisk Drive and Alice Drive. One way, sorry. Subject site are the properties located in South Market area and urban service area. Here's a contact map of the proposed parcel and the aerial view, close-up view of the proposed site. The future land use is currently rez 3, residential 3 dwelling units per gross acre. And the zoning currently is AR. The proposal is to R1 MH. The project overview, so the subject site consists of an existing single-family dwelling on approximately 1.03 acres. The applicant is proposing to divide the parcel into two lots and build a new lot in accordance with the R1 MH Single Family Mobile Home District standards. Access to the property will be from Brisk Drive, and the new lot access will be from Alice Drive. Both roads are approximately 50 feet of ride of way. With that, we recommend approval of the zoning amendment from Planning Commission, as well as Planning Development Economic Growth, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have some questions, but board members, any questions? We go first. So I'm just pulling it up. Is this a mobile home? Are there mobile homes in the area?
Mobile homes in the area? Let me see. I think there may be a couple in the area themselves. With respect to the district itself, there are various R1 MH districts in the area. The intent of the district is not to allow for the mobile home, but it is to allow for the smaller lot size. So, single-family detached is still permitted in R1 MH.
And this is in the county, this area?
Correct.
Yep.
Boy, if you look at that map.
How big's this lot?
1.03 acres.
So the rezonement just to have one house on this lot?
Two houses. They're looking to split the lot in half.
So you're talking about half-acre lot?
Approximately.
I, well, you know, when these come to me, I always look around, and I can tell you, there's a million code violations going on in this community. I don't know, has code, I mean, has anyone ever? Do you guys look at that when you're looking at these?
Yeah, when a project does come in, on the subject site itself, if there's a code violation, we'll either make note of that in the agenda memo to either resolve that code violation or we won't be able to proceed forward until the violation is remedied. In this specific case, the subject site is not in a violation. They have one single-family home. They did used to have a mobile home, but that's been removed, and they're just looking to split their house to have their, to construct another single-family home for a family member.
But there's a, there's a lot of other, like, looks like someone's got a used car storage down the street from these folks in a residential community, so I just wanted to call this out to our code department.
Okay.
What, since we can have ADUs, why are they not just going the ADU route?
Because they cannot split their lot if they went to do an ADU, and they want to provide the one, the other half of the lot to their family member, so they have an ownership. You can't split it if we do an ADU. We did offer that up at the very beginning.
Is that a child or?
A brother. It's their brother.
That's understandable.
Commissioner Mariano?
And to speak to a potential code violation, so during the local planning agency, we were also made aware, the subject site to the east on Brisk Drive, that property was in question with a code violation. We did verify that the code violation was resolved back in July, but that person who was having opposition to this subject site, which was not related to the code violation site and that issue, that would, they, we put them in touch with code to further, because they said it wasn't cleaned up, but our records show since July it was cleaned up, so.
Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you. Are they going to put a mobile home up or are they gonna put a single-family?
Single-family.
Regular construction?
Correct, single-family.
So is that, then that condition's in there?
It's a rezoning, so we didn't condition the rezoning.
It's Euclidian zoning, you can't condition.
So why are they going to a mobile home zoning?
Because of the lot size, because that's the next zoning district available. That's a smaller lot size that allows for single-family detached.
And this has been done.
You guys just sold properties for 10 bucks apiece. So when you look at affordability of a home, you can't start discriminating against the type of home. It's a half-acre lot in the most expensive area to live in the county. Mobile homes are pretty nice these days, so I just want to put that out there on the record.
Well, I think there's already a mobile home on that lot.
That was been, it's been removed. There's a slab, if you're looking at the aerial, there is a slab that was still there, but the mobile home itself has been removed.
But is there another home on the lot?
There is a single-family home on the lot.
Okay, I just don't see it.
Yeah. But this has been done in this area. They've split these same-sized lots.
Yeah. If we could bring up Pasco Mapper, we can show you. So there is precedent that has been set in this area already with various R1 MHs that split their lots in half, essentially into half-acre lots. It's dating back to the 90s, early 2000s, 2011-ish, I think was the most recent one.
Okay, the applicant is here. They may want to speak to us, maybe? What's the name of the room? Bristol?
Brisk.
Brisk.
And Alice.
Hi, my name is Jose Castro. I live in 33110 Bricks Dry, Wesley Chapel.
And you've been sworn? You took the oath when they?
Yes.
I don't think he stood up. I think she did. They probably didn't understand.
Okay, I'll swear you in now. Go ahead and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth? So help you God.
Left hand work?
Yeah, I know, just kidding. Okay, go ahead.
We want to split the lot into single homes, because my brother and I, we bought the property like maybe 2019, and you know, according to the salesman, they told us, you know, you can build two houses, because they already had two water meters on the property. And there used to be two mobile homes in that property. That is why we decided not to buy between him and I. And then, but you know, when I started building my house, the county make us to destroy the existing mobile home that was in one lot, and we remove it. And now we want to proceed and split the lot into rezoning. That way he can build his house and the lot that belongs to him. That was the reason.
Yeah.
That we want to do it.
And it's, okay. I mean, I'm okay with it, but we have public comment. Any more questions for these guys? Okay, we have someone that signed up to speak.
Jason Mills?
And then, then we'll talk about it.
I believe I was misinformed that this, what they're doing is going to impact on my property.
Yeah, we need your name and address.
Name and address first.
Oh, sorry, my name is Jason Mills, 3530 Howard Drive, Wesley Chapel, Florida, and I was.
Were you sworn in?
No.
I need to swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth? So help you God.
I do. I was told that this was possibly going to impede on my property values and, you know, taxes and whatnot, and they told me that that may happen, but I believe it's totally incorrect. So what they're doing is fine and dandy with me. I have no problems with it.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I was wrong.
Okay, no problem. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this item?
Move approval. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
We need clarification on P-49. Did the motion for AP-83 include P-49 as the consent agenda?
Yes, right?
Consent was already, yes.
Yeah.
It was the consent agenda.
Yeah, it was on the consent agenda, and we approved the consent agenda with two items on.
Did you make sure that it was a part of it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right. There's people here that I'm not sure whether here, but we're done with our regular business now, correct?
We are.
Okay, Commissioner Mariano, we have one more thing, and then we're gonna go to my items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was a president of the Shadyus Little League that lost his house with a fire recently, and they want to run a fundraiser farm out at the park. They want to waive the park fees at LC Logan. The expense that would have generated to have it would have been $560, but we can waive the fee, and I would like to help us waive the fee.
Second.
You know, I think I saw that fire when we were out on our boat. Yeah, that was tough. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sorry that I have a long list for you today. We are gonna start with the Tourist Development Council update. Sorry, just hang on to that picture. From October 10th through 12th, the DMO will be proudly hosting the Lynn Lewis Foundation Pink October Games at the Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus. This women's tournament is set to welcome over 100 flag football teams from across the nation. That is like one of the fastest-growing sports in America. It's not about, it's not just about the competition, it's about coming together to support and unite in the fight against breast cancer. This empowering and impactful event will bring together athletes, survivors, and supporters to raise awareness, foster education, and celebrate the strength of those affected by breast cancer. The pink games are more than just a sports competition, they are a movement. The proceeds from this remarkable event will support the foundation's ongoing programs, which include breast cancer education, financial support for patients, families, community outreach, and survivor mentorship. The event highlights include the flag football tournament, survivor recognition ceremony, educational health booths and onsite screenings, live entertainment, food vendors, and family activities, and a pink marketplace featuring local and women-owned businesses. On the Tourism Council subject still, I need to replace the former manager of Saddle Brook. And the name has been submitted to us is Alexis Doyle, who is the granddaughter of, yeah.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, that's done. Okay, now you can go to pictures, and I'll try and go. All right, so I attended the FAC Innovation and Policy Conference in Gainesville, where we, you know, I chaired the federal committee. We did take up the two items that we spoke about here. That was the Section 8 housing vouchers and the issues of having people come to the county and live for one day then be considered local, and portability and some of the other stuff. So I do believe that this is gonna get added to our next policy offerings, and everyone was going home to look at what's going on in their county. We also talked about the Davis Bacon and Davis Bacon Act. My co-chair or vice chair, Mike, he is from Escambia County. He is retired military, and he was told, the group, the cost to build a hangar on, I think it was Eglin Air Force Base, it was one-third of the cost was attributed to the Davis Bacon Act, to build one hangar. Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I thought we got pretty good support there to move this issue forward as well. I had to leave before the discussion went, oh, no, before, before we had my committee, we had the property tax discussion under financing tax. You were part of that conversation. There is a very interesting set of YouTube videos, or maybe I got it from the House, the Representatives website, but the House Committee had, has had four hearings now, and I've listened to two of them, on the subject of property taxes, and they're very interesting. So when you're driving around, you have nothing to do, listen to, the first one is Amy Baker and some other people talking about the history of property taxes, Save Our Homes, Truth and Milage, all those things. And the next one is the League of Cities and the Association of Counties talking and about what's going on in the state, and then the representatives asking questions, and it's, I found it fascinating. Okay, next. All right, so, so last week, I'll start out with this. So AMSKILLS was visited by the DO, Department of Education, and they have told us that they think some of the equipment that we're using is being, that they've given us through some grants called the Peacock Grant, are being used incorrectly. And we've had, Commissioner Mariano, thank you for Slater. Slater and Sean and Mike have all been wonderful, but Slater exceptionally got us an appointment with the Chief of Staff and the Chancellor. And so I drove up for a half an hour meeting last Monday, and we brought them information that showed them that every grant that we got, and this is in the Peacock Grant, where we said we were putting equipment at Anclot High School, they agreed to and signed off on. They met, but now they're saying we've used that equipment incorrectly. So it's, it's been a challenge for us to try and understand when they said we used it correctly, and now they're saying we didn't. They approved all the equipment to go there. Also, they said in their database, they show only one completed pre-apprentice, and we showed them the 12 completed pre-apprentice certificates they've issued to us. So they have something going on up there, we don't know what. But we met with, with those two gentlemen, and they, they told us they absolutely love our program and that if we apply for another grant, we will get first in line, but they're, they're thinking they want to take this equipment away from some of these specific grants, which actually takes all the equipment out of Anclot High School and leaves 130 kids with no equipment. I have informed John Leguizamo this, and we're continuing to see, to try and get them to not do this. We haven't had an answer back yet, but that's why I was in Tallahassee. We left them with all the documentation, where they agreed to everything, and showed them the, all the paperwork. So I also stayed for this event that night, the Florida Women's Hall of Fame induction ceremony. I'm embarrassed to say I've been nominated for this for next year, so they invited me to come this year, and I thought, well, I should see, see what this is and what this means. So this is Dottie Skipper, no, Dottie Hoover Skipper? I think I'm saying her name right. Who's a wonderful woman from Hillsborough County that I met at a special dinner on sex-trafficked women and children in Tampa. And she has an amazing, amazing nonprofit with some other women. They literally go into the adult entertainment businesses and try and help and try and rescue women out of there. And she was nominated and won this award. And this is a lady from, I don't remember her name, but this is a lady from the Panhandle. And Senator Albritton, Senator Gates, and our lieutenant governor were there at the ceremony. And so when I drove home from Tallahassee, I listened to those two meetings. Took me four and a half hours. Those two meetings take four and a half hours to listen to. That's what I did the whole way over to Tallahassee. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
To talk about the AMSKILLS, and you know, I think you're, you know, you've been fantastic with that program, the help we've got, the federal grants we've got, working with the state to get their grants. And you know, Slater Bayless was great talking with us, gave us some suggestions and ideas, and even reached out to former Speaker Corcoran. He made a call for us to help, you know, with the appointment, so he was very helpful as well. But this is something that, you think about low-income areas, you think about kids that can get training, and we've seen all the benefit of AMSKILLS through the years, even if it's not specifically exactly how they said they wanted to see it. To take it out, take your equipment out and hamstring a program that's working great, to create jobs and create opportunities for people, I just don't understand why they do it.
I don't either, but I'm not gonna burn a bridge. We pleaded our case to say, we think, you know, the grant says pre-apprentices or apprentices. think, you know, the grant says pre-apprentices or apprentices. We did have four signed apprentices. We had, you know, we've only been in that building two years. When COVID came, we were at Marchman, and we had four candidates signed up with companies to go into an apprentice program, and when COVID hit, they all said, no, we're not hiring new employees right now. And then we were locked out of Marchman, and then when we came back in, when the school district opened up again, they informed us they wanted that space and that we had to be out in the next three months. So then we went on that journey of, of moving out, storing everything, and finding a place to land, then getting the money for that, building that, and dealing with that Davis Bacon. So for almost two and a half years, we weren't, we were doing our boot camps, but we weren't able to have a training facility. So we explained that to them, but, you know, some people see gray and some people only read black and white, and we're doing the best we can to not have that equipment taken out, and we have hopefully some plans if they do. But you're right, you know, we, we talk about these programs that we're here, that we deal with, and then talk to you about Hope Shot and all that, Met, Metapom Ministries, Hope Shot, Steps to Recovery, all those nonprofits where they're helping people get back on their feet, we work with to have their clients get jobs. Because if they don't have jobs, where are they going to go?
Nothing.
So...
Well, I'm fighting with this. We'll keep you all. You're doing great.
I'm not going to gallop that far right now. I, I went to visit the One Community Now Veteran Support Center. I went to visit the Hope Shot. They're doing great things in the community. I had my Trinity, Odessa leadership meeting. We had, we were full. These are all the HOA and CDD leaders from, you know, Trinity and Odessa. We had Metapom Ministries talk, that of course Chase did a great job, and then we had Parks and Libraries also speak. So another great meeting. Thanks, everyone who helped put that together. Again, January seventeenth, we have a fun run for Miles that Matter at, for All Children's Hospital. This morning, seven-thirty this morning, I was on a Zoom with U.S. News and World Report. They came out with the top hospitals, children's hospitals in the country, and I'm very pleased to announce that our own John Hopkins All Children's was number one in Florida and tied for number four in southeastern United States. So they jumped a whole bunch of categories in, in a lot of the different categories. I don't have it all here, but they, they made a huge leap. So great stuff happening down at John Hopkins. I attended the Food Policy Council meeting in Lander Lakes. I have some flyers the same night that we have our big second annual dinner at AMSKILLS, which is sold out, but I hope all of you are coming somewhere in here. I have the, oh, I'm going to pass these down to my two Eastside Commissioners. They, they are, let me have this one for a second. They're, they're hosting their second annual Pasco Food Summit. It is at the Pasco One-Stop Shop in Date City. They're doing educational tours and presentations and having light refreshments. I've donated some starkey seltzers to their event, and they're expecting between fifty and eighty people at that event. There's some really cool stuff happening at the Food Policy Council, and they're going to present to us in December or January. I already told you I went to the Emergency Services Employee Recognition. I also kicked off the BAMA, which is the Bay Area Manufacturing Association's virtual tour of Master Cut to, to high school students in the Tampa Bay area. And the Purple Light event is coming. I don't have the date in front of me. It's when we light this building up, if we participate, to honor veterans across the United States. Do you guys have that in your calendar, Joanna? I know I had to kind of push for this last time we did it. It's in November, but I wanted to make sure that we're going to light up, you know, we light this one up in purple to, to commemorate that. I don't know what we do on the West Side to light buildings up.
I believe Facilities has a list of buildings that they light up, but I think last year we did a resolution for that.
Do I have to do a resolution for us to light, light it up for purple to support veterans?
I know the city does it under the bridge.
No, we've made motions before.
That's what I was thinking too, yeah. So I, I would like someone to make a motion since I can't.
Move Commissioner Dorothy's request.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I think that is what I have for my stuff. So anything else for the good of the order? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you.